The school district of Waukesha, it's a full board meeting tonight on November 9th, 2016. And we'll get started by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So will you please take the roll call vote?
William Baum.
For roll call attendance? Here.
William Baumgart.
Here.
Robert Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien. Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Kurt O'Brien is excused. He has business out of town tonight. So will you also please verify that the meeting's been properly posted with the media?
Yes, it has.
Okay. We're going to start off our evening on a fantastic note. We have bright lights tonight and Jason Sadowski, principal of Butler Middle School, is going to be speaking with us and a number of his students on #MonthOfAction for October. Welcome.
Thank you. So a couple of years ago at Butler, we're at the middle level, bullying is always an issue. And a couple of years ago, we really wanted to focus on minimizing bullying as well as building a positive culture at Butler. So our student services staff led by Kim Harrington has had some great ideas of making that improvement. So I'm going to hand it over to her and I also want to introduce, come on up here, two sixth grade students from our student council, Josefina Fish and Nora Saroni. That will be also talking through this as well.
Welcome tonight, girls.
I'm just going to kind of introduce a little bit. We developed this program last year really in effort to help Butler be a safe and supportive school for all students, not only to address any bullying that might be happening, but bottom line, help create a culture where all students feel welcomed and all students feel their voices can be heard. And through that, we developed in part this Month of Action where every day, students and staff can bring voice and make each other feel welcome and feel that their contributions really do matter. And so I'm going to turn it over to the girls to talk about what those Month of Action days look like.
Hi, I'm Nora Saroni, a sixth grader at Butler Middle School.
Hello.
So what's the point, Josefina? Perspective of why bullying happens and how to stick up for yourself, like, and not just stand there and let it happen and to stop bullies from bullying. What did we do in Month of Bullying? Well, Josefina, we decided on, we decided on focusing on an entire month on prevention of bullying. And some activities that we did include giving a bracelet as a reminder of the focus and I'm wearing it right now. It looks like that and it says Butler United. We had a different focus for every day of the month and here is an example of what a calendar that everyone got looks like. Former Bucks player Bob Dandridge, number 10 on the Bucks team, he came to talk to us about what his childhood and how he overcame bullying and what he did about it. The school counselors, just to round up at the end of the month, gave a presentation about bullying. And one of our favorite activities was sticky notes. And we found this, we found this quote, it says, "Be sure to taste your words before you spit them out." And to us, it means that before, think about how, what you're doing to the other person and how they're going to feel and what you're going to feel like after you did that. And think about that before you do it. Sticky notes. So one day, we had as many people during lunch write on a sticky note that, like, what their hope was. And another day, we had a hand you could write on every day and that you said hello. And like, if I said hello to Nora, then I would write her hand, her on a finger and I would write my name in the palm. Pillar of Hope, all the my hopes, like what your dream is or what your hope is. And we created a pillar of it in the main, outside of the main office. This, on the left is a zoom in of the my hopes. You could write whatever your hope was. And on the right are some sticky notes of just the positive attitude to let everyone be happy. We we interviewed a few teachers about the month, about how the month went. So we'll do that right now.
How do you think bullying prevention month will change bullying?
Well, I think it helped because I think it got the conversation going and got kids thinking about it, being aware of it and kind of brought people together in the community to try to stop it.
And what will you do to help prevent bullying?
Well, I think we can all just keep remembering that we're all in a community together and we need to look out for each other and stand up for each other. And I think there's a lot of power in that if we work together for the positive things instead of focusing on the bullying behaviors.
And this is Laura Gabriel, our math teacher of sixth grade.
I think bullying prevention month changed bullying.
I think by kids being more aware of what's going on in the school and especially with those sticky notes where students got to say positive things about their peers. I really believe kids feel better about themselves and they do think twice about what they say to others. So it's just that great reinforcement of that feeling good instead of anything negative.
And what would you do to help prevent bullying?
Probably me, myself, is probably give more positive comments to students and not focus on the negative, just reinforcing that positive things. And then maybe other students will start feeling the same way and they'll start saying positive things to their peers.
And our last interviewer is Mr. Kavneski, or Mr. Sadowski. He is our principal of Butler Middle School.
Has what we've done impacted behavior?
Yes, our referrals are down by almost a half from last year and previous years. So our, what we're, some of this positive affirmation of students, just keeping a positive attitude and supports that students are giving each other, that we are giving students, has shown a positive impact in our building.
Our last interviewer is Mr. Kavneski. He's part of the student council.
How do you think of bullying prevention month changed bullying?
I think these students at Butler got to realize a little more about what bullying actually is. And they got to see lots of different ideas about ways that they can stop bullying and stand up to bullies through all of our different daily activities and challenges that we did.
And what would you do to prevent bullying?
I think just to encourage everyone to always stand up for bullying, do some of the things we learned in this month to help us stand up to bullying, see what bullying actually is. And we learn how and what to do when we see bullying, so just making sure that we aren't just bystanders. We take a stand against it.
So we asked a few students, what do they think about bullying prevention month? One girl named Casey said, "It's a good way to start the new year and it mainly happens in the younger grades. We are growing more maturely too." And I said that, making good habits and getting the happiness through the school, making good habits in the beginning of the school year and gaining confidence and knowing how to stick up for others and making good habits in the beginning of the year. And just waving hello or sitting by someone new, they're all examples of our special calendar days. And so that just helps the positive go through. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for our students? Mr. Baumgart?
Yes. You got to stay there a minute.
At first, the easy part, girls.
I just wanted to compliment you on being involved with this program because it's very important that we have that kind of an atmosphere in our schools and that you're contributing to that. And you've done a very good job in sharing it with us and I appreciate that. I do have one other little question besides the two of you. Were there some students involved with like the videos we just saw and stuff like that?
No, it's mainly just me and Josefina.
You did the whole program? Well, double congratulations on that.
That is leadership.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Roddy.
Oh, yes, thank you. Lovely presentation, girls. I do have a question though regarding the wall of hope. Did you two add your comments there and what were your hopes?
Well, my hope was to make my sister's hope come true because she cares a lot to me. My hope was to become an actor one day or writer one day.
I hope those hopes come true for you.
Thanks.
Mrs. Brusink?
Yes. You girls are wonderful leaders. You better watch out. You might be a principal someday, just like Mr. Sadowski. Because leadership starts when you're very, very young. I would like to know if you gave your fellow students any examples of what they could say to someone that did say mean things to them. Did you, did you, do you have a certain thing, a certain response that is in place?
It's not really certain because there's different types of bullying, like cyberbullying and bullying that happens in lockers, like shoving people in lockers and stuff. So you don't really have a main response. It's just what you think has to be done to stick up for the other person or yourself.
You say, "What do you think has to be done?" Okay. Do you ever, do you ever share your feelings with the person that's bullying you, like, "I don't like that," or would you please stop that?
Yes. If I was bullied, I would stand up to them and one of our, like, our guidance counselors came in and she gave two examples, one of what you should not do because they will stop, they won't stop, and one other one that they will stop.
Would you agree that if the person that's bullied said something mean back to them, that then the bullying continues?
Yes, it does because if you're saying something mean back to them, that means you're as mean as they are and you don't want to do that because if you think they're mean, then you're as mean as they are. So you just wanted to say your feelings and stay true.
Very good. You know, what you shared with us tonight doesn't just pertain to kids in school, it pertains to grownups too. Grownups need to, you know, have skills, just like you're learning skills, to deal with bullies because we too get bullied. Doesn't mean we don't. When you're a grownup, you get bullied too, maybe even worse.
Right.
Well, I was very pleased with your presentation and most of all, your leadership. My, my. Way to go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Ms. Madden?
Didn't you make TV last week or the week before? I saw on the article, I think it was Channel 12.
Really?
So congratulations and perhaps your good work will spread to some other schools, give them ideas that this is a good thing to start and it's helping the school with referrals and things. So congratulations.
Thank you.
You both, she'd be very proud of the presentation that you gave tonight. You did an excellent job speaking to us. And one of the first things I thought is, both of you could be reporters some days. You're such good communicators. And you have one sitting right behind you, working for the Waukesha Freeman. And she's giving you thumbs up. So you have a future. And isn't it so, isn't it so much better to be positive and polite and to be nice to people? It just feels so much better, doesn't it?
After bullies, bully someone. They're like, "Oh, why did I do that?" But I'm too embarrassed to say sorry or something.
Sure.
And bullying prevention lets them say sorry. It's one of our days on our calendar. It's called Make Things Right. It's on the 24th. And it's called Make Things Right. And it tells them if you did something mean to someone or something like that, you could say sorry.
Sorry can be a hard word to say sometimes. But you know what? If you truly are sorry and you make amends, it feels good too, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. I hope all of your hard work pays off in the community and it sounds like with a 50% reduction, Jason. That's going in the right direction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our recognitions this evening, Chris Hedstrom will introduce some very important people to us. Or Jody Landish will introduce some very important people to us.
Well, there are people. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have two special guests this evening, both of whom you've gotten to know over the past month. We're going to make them official this evening. I'll let them just give a little ditty to the board this evening. So the first young man we have is my secondary director, Dan Keizer, and he'll speak first. Melissa Horn, who is our new principal at Randall STEM, will speak after that. So both highly intelligent, charismatic people and we're glad to have them in the organization, so.
Thank you. And I just want to say that I'm honored to be here. I'm, you know, there's so many good things that are happening here in Waukesha and everyone has been extremely welcoming. And over the past month that I've been here, people have asked, you know, why Waukesha and why come now? And I just wanted to say that thing that brought me to Waukesha and was the peak interest of mine was the innovation and the focus on the students through the personalized learning. Not as a product, not as a thing, but as a process. And it's an ever-evolving thing that we're trying to do here. And so with all of the people here and the good things that have been going on, it's actually been a great intellectual challenge in trying to wrap my head around it and say, "How can I help improve all the good things that are going on and make it one better next year than it is this year?"
Thank you, Dean. Questions? Ms. Reinacek?
Are you related to Steve Shloman?
No. But I have worked with him. We worked in Janesville together.
Well, Dan, I think, you know, it's one thing to talk about personalized learning. And I'm glad to hear you talk about, you know, you're focused on process. It's another thing to actually truly implement it in a manner that has impact, high impact. I think we've been doing it for a while. But you hit it right on the head. It's a process and it's continuing and it's going to morph over time. And we look forward to having you at the helm.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, I'm Melissa Horn. I'm the new principal at Randall STEM. And I'm kind of shooting from the hip here. I wasn't sure that I was going to talk and say hello, so.
That's okay.
But things are going really well. I've been here about two months and I'm excited to be here in Waukesha. Not to piggyback, but I mean, obviously STEM is all about that personalization and being there and doing different things. So I guess I just want to extend a welcome. And if you ever want to come over, we'd love to have you. Lots of new things going on over there. I know we have a digital learning day coming up and a Great STEM Challenge that I hear amazing things about, so I'll experience for the first time here in about a month. So feel free if you ever want to stop over and see us.
Thank you. Any questions for Melissa?
Yes, yes. Melissa, would you have the district put that on in our packets as a date so that we can get it on our calendars and come over on that date? Because I know that's a really, really big day at Randall.
Yeah, for the, for the digital learning or for the Great STEM Challenge or for both?
Both.
Yeah, yeah. The Great STEM Challenge, actually, we're doing catapults. So I'm really excited about it. Something different that we've never done before. So, yeah, it'll be great to have you.
Give us those dates on a calendar. We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Dan. Welcome to our district. Moving on to our student representatives report tonight. On West High School, we have Caitlin and Nick. Will you please come forward? What's happening at West?
Look at him all dressed up. I'm impressed.
But I'll just start. I'm Nick Ports. I'm a senior at Waukesha West. Involved in various activities, various sports, including soccer and baseball. Yeah, we're just here to kind of talk about some of the positive things that are happening right now.
And I'm Caitlin Feldy. I'm heavily involved with student council and marching band, drama.
Yeah, I'd like to start off just by pointing out some of the positive patterns going on at West. I've noticed a series of thoughtful democratic discussions on real world topics in the classroom, especially in my language classes. We've been talking a lot about, in Spanish class, the Mexican Day of the Dead or the Dia de los Muertos. That's a big thing that we've been using. We've been using this real world, these real world events to practice our listening, practice our speaking on things that actually have an application in the real world. My French class, we talked about the sales going on in France right now. And we actually use newscasts and news shows to practice our listening. And it's not just a recorded voice, it's something, or somebody that's actually speaking. Also, the superfan turnaround. Last year, during the football season especially, and also carrying into the basketball season, this is no exaggeration, there was probably 20 kids who showed up to the football games. And we knew something had changed. The superfan culture at the school needed to change, get something going. So early this, early this year, actually, I believe it was in August, we had a superfan boot camp put together by one of my buddies, Wyatt Wilderman, and Mrs. Jenny Brown. And it was where we brought in all the incoming freshmen and also members of the leadership club. And we brought them out of the field. We taught them cheers. We had a little fun. We had a water balloon toss where we actually tossed 800 water balloons. And we just kind of got the energy going about the superfan culture at West. And this year, I would say there's at least 200 kids that have showed up to these games. It's complete turnaround. People are excited. There's school spirit. And actually, the week of homecoming, we have themes where you dress up. And I would say 75% of the kids dressed up. And I think it's a complete turnaround and we can only go forward from there.
Another thing we wanted to touch on was teach for helpfulness. I personally experienced this recently because I got my appendix taken out, so I missed a whole bunch of school. And our teachers are just so helpful when it comes to getting back into the swing of things and making sure every student feels like they have the ability to stay on track even if something happens or they have a problem. And then another thing was our AP classes focusing not only on the content, but also on AP testing. So we feel ready to move on to the college level, but we also feel as though we can pass the AP test because a lot of times, the AP test doesn't necessarily fit with the same classroom, like, style of testing. And so they're doing really well with making sure that we all feel as though we're not being caught blindsided by the test itself.
All right, some purposeful changes, kind of what I talked about, this superfan boot camp that went on. Here are two just screenshots. I don't know if you can see them as clearly, but we actually put together a superfan page. We had a, we had an announcement that aired over the school that had some kids showing this superfan boot camp. We did the gauntlet run and we did the cheerleaders showing everybody the different cheers. We did proper attire where everybody was dressed up in their crazy blues. And it was, it was a really good time. And then also, we made public the list of cheers and chants for the football games. And also, something worth noting is our positive chants this year. We've outlawed all chants that actually don't focus on our own team and are directed to anybody but our own players. So I think that's a very public thing that we need to keep in mind in all sports this year. But during the football season, it's worked out well. So we love to keep it.
We moved our Pataca football game, our championship games, to during the school day on the Friday of our homecoming week because we felt like it really wasn't getting a whole lot of support. And we wanted the people that participated in that to feel as though we supported because it is a huge part of our homecoming week and it's something that we love to do and we didn't want those people to feel as though it's any less than any other part of it. And there is a lot of support for it. A lot of people thought it was a lot of fun and they, it was very interesting to have the entire school in the stands and see everybody cheering for all of these girls playing the football games.
I also wrote the cooperation in athletics, specifically talking about between soccer and football. And this season, it was kind of a testament this year to our new school spirit we had. We were blessed enough to have our soccer team and football team make it to round three of the playoffs, I believe. I believe, although sadly, we lost this past weekend. But we were so gracious enough to have that happen. And because we only have our single turf field, of course, the soccer team and the football team wanted to play on it at the same time. So the football team said, "Look, when do you guys want it? We will go after." And I think it's just a good testament to the superfan culture and the culture between players at the school, putting others' aspirations before your own and just looking out for everybody in the school, not just your specific sport. Because I know lots of high schools, they have cliques. They have their sports teams that stick together and don't necessarily look out for all the athletes in the school or all the students in the school. But I think this is just a good testament.
And then these are just a couple of notable achievements that they were proud of our students for doing. Our marching band tied for first place for our quad A. And our color guard actually got best in the entire state.
Yeah, the soccer team won the sectional championship. We competed in the state tournaments again, against Whitefish Bay. And sadly, we lost 2-1, but it was a great season, so. The football team advanced to Level 3 of the playoffs and played Marshfield, was it? I'm not too sure. They had a great season, they had a great season as well, so.
Our girls' cross country team took fourth in the state, which is a really big achievement. A very large number of teams there. I can't remember the exact number, but fourth is very impressive. We're really proud of them. And then our theater one act is state bound, November 18.
That's about all we had on the agenda, but we're open to questions, of course, so.
Mrs. Brusink?
Well, Mr. Ports, I'm very, very impressed at the way you're dressed. Thank you.
Actually, we have a soccer banquet going on.
Oh, you do?
You're honest. I like that.
Way to go because it's important to dress up for soccer banquets, just like at a school board. See, everybody's dressed up, so congratulations, Eske. Why do you think students weren't real, weren't really involved in attending sports activities? I'm real surprised to hear that.
Last year? You know, honestly, I'm not too sure. I think it was kind of a, I think it was a culmination of last year's seniors, just kind of going off our cheers. Last year's seniors were very focused on the other team. And some of the cheers were actually negative, kind of ripping other players. And I'm not sure all the fans kind of wanted that. And I hope they wouldn't all want that. But there was kind of a disconnect in some of the seniors and some of the juniors and underclassmen. And also, I think, well, not even also, I think, starting that in football season and then progressing into basketball season, I think people were just kind of getting old of it with no change happening. So this year, when we started our boot camp and introduced all the freshmen to these new cheers, we got them super excited. The juniors followed solely behind. And in our leadership club, we actually have people from juniors and the junior class and the senior class. And just them spreading the word, getting the energy going and telling them, you know, "This year's going to be different. We're going to, we're going to change it for the better." And I think that might be accomplished.
I also think that there was a lot more advertisement with it this year. Sometimes there's some confusion about what exactly was going on. And this year, they're doing really well with making sure that everybody is aware what superfan theme it is, when the game is, when it starts, other activities that are going on with it, stuff like that.
It's good stuff, good stuff, because you get a drum up spirit in your schools. Because I know from living in the community that people think West is a very, very good school and everybody wants their kids to go to West. So you got to do that, don't you? Drum up that school spirit and keep it going. Nice job.
Ms. Reinacek?
Nick, was that your idea, the superfan?
No, it was actually one of my best friends, Wyatt Wilderman. He, he kind of came up with the idea for it and then he got together a group of 20 kids, about 10 from the junior And then he got together a group of 20 kids, about 10 from the junior class and 10 from the senior class. And we got together and we knew something had to be done, so. Kind of where it all started, early, late this summer, early this school year.
Yeah, there's the idea and then the implementation of the idea. And it took like a lot of work and coordination on many people's behalf. And appreciate you sharing how you can influence and change culture at your school. Any, any other?
Yes, just one more thing. I don't want you to think that, I was trying to say that West was our best high school because we're very proud of South and North equally as we are of West. But, you know, I understand sometimes you gotta kick them a little bit in the behind and get them out there.
We knew what you were saying.
Excellent, anybody else? Thank you, guys, you represented your school great. I know your principal's happy, he's nodding his head in the background, smiling, and good, good job.
Thank you.
We'll see you back in a few months. We're at the section of our meeting where we have an opportunity to listen to our citizens speak directly to the board. As has been past practice, we'll take three minutes of time per speaker. And at the two and a half minute mark, Mrs. Brusink will give you an indication to wrap up with 30 seconds remaining. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations will be prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or behaviors that may detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our participants, please silence your cellphones at this time. And we do have one person signed up, that's Mr. Paul Reese.
I just want to say my hope comes from my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I want to talk a little about, not about the election, but about civics and the lack of it being taught in our schools today. With me is, you hear a lot about the Electoral College. And want to get rid of it and don't understand why it exists. I know that because when I graduated high school back in 1986, 1986, it, I didn't know why. I, I didn't understand why we had an Electoral College. And it wasn't taught, it wasn't explained why the founding fathers felt this is a need. You know, where it comes from, why are, why are states given so many points and some less and some more? You know, it's because every 10 years, we have a census. And the census, those points change every state. And it was so that power wouldn't become centralized. They despise that, they lived through centralized power. They did not want to see it ever happen again. And they wanted to protect our rights as individuals and that no state could tell another state what to do just because they had more people show up on one day than others. They understood that some states were more centralized than others. And so, they, they didn't want this, they didn't want power to become centralized. And they didn't want... I'm sorry. They didn't want power to come centralized, they didn't... I shouldn't do that. Gosh darn it. I should have wrote it down. Anyways, the lack of the understanding of why that they did this is apparent in our schools. They, we are not taught these fundamental, basic understandings of how our election works and why these things were important. That besides who it is that's our candidate, that why this, this, this whole election process went into... I know one of the things I wanted to say is, we live in a representative republic, not a democracy. When we take the pledge allegiance, we say it to a flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, not the democracy. It is a representative republic. And they, the best evidence of this is the state like Idaho and a state like California both have two senators.
30 seconds?
Equal amount of say on how things are done. They did not want one state to have power over another. This is why they broke these things up. And I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought tonight. But I, I wanted to say this because these are some things in civics that just are not being taught. And kids are coming out and saying, why do they do this? Why do they have this? And they have no clue on why it was done. They're absolutely clueless to the basic foundations of this country. And that is shameful. And these are things I, I learned after college, I mean, after high school, sorry about that. So thanks for your time, and sorry about that, I was full in the blank last night, but thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our minute approval. We do have three sets of minutes to approve this evening. October 12, 2016, regular Board of Education minutes. On October 17, we had an executive session for an expulsion panel. And then on October 24, we had a special meeting for our budget and taxes. Tax levy, so. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Think by Mr. McCaffrey? Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye, passes 8-0, Sue. Moving on to communications part of our meeting, Dr. Gray?
Yes, I have three letters this evening from the Wisconsin School Music Association to each of our three high school principals. And they are graduating the principals for their schools, for their bands' excellent performance and showmanship at the 2016 WSMA State Marching Band Championships, which were held on October 15. We will have at the December board meeting, in part of our bright lights, we will have the West band here. Not the whole band, that would be a little bit crowded. But some representatives to kind of talk about, they've had, they've had a wonderful year. North typically has a wonderful year of these competitions. But West took a first at one of the comps. And so they'll be here to talk about the year they had, they've had in marching band.
You know, the excellence in these programs have been maintained for decades. It's just unbelievable, part of our culture, part of our community. Hats off to all those who participate.
And I think, you know, every year, it's a challenge there. We need to, again, start looking at, at the music in the lower grades. By the time they get to middle school, there's so many other directions they go, so many other, you know, distractions. We want to make sure that the bands have adequate numbers of, of students going in. And not just adequate numbers of students, but adequate in all the different types of instruments that they need to make a full band.
Yes, yes. Is there anything else, Mr. Gray?
That's it.
Okay. Mrs. Brusink, do you have a report for the Waukesha Education Foundation?
Oh, I do, mister.
All right.
I do. We want to thank, thank you to all the staff from the school district of Waukesha who have participated in the Waukesha Education Foundation Casualty fundraisers. As of November 3, $8,916 has been raised with six more jeans day schedules. So there's a jeans day, I believe, once a month. And the teachers pay $5 if they want to wear jeans to school and they donate it to the foundation. It's a phenomenal idea. Another $765 was raised on the raffle of the Packer Bear tickets. The foundation will use all these funds to support innovative programs in the school district of Waukesha. Again, the 2017 Celebration of Excellence will be held on Sunday, February 26, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at South High School in the Field House. Please mark your calendars to participate. This year's Celebration of Excellence will focus on the success of our students and schools. And we will give each school the opportunity to showcase an innovation that they have going on. As far as the Celebration of Excellence, the school district of Waukesha Hall of Innovation will give schools an opportunity to share the specifics about the innovation occurring at their school. Each presenter will have a trade show style trade table space. And student participation will be encouraged. We'll be asking local businesses to sponsor a table. School District of Waukesha Points of Pride video. The idea is to have each school draft an elevator pitch to tell the community about the school. And furthermore, the plan is to compile a video of all of our school videos to run at the celebration and to be shown on cable TV and, and distributed to local realtors. Also, we will be showcasing district student musical talent on our rock stage, Rockstar stage. Our goal is to raise $20,000 from this event to fund grants. And we will be asking businesses to donate raffles or silent auction items. We'll also be asking schools to donate school color baskets and items that can build wooden, items that they can build, like wooden trays, bag toss games, cutting boards, et cetera, as a raffle and silent auction items as well. And this year, or last year, this year, 2016, the foundation is able to fund 25 grants from teachers totaling $27,885. In 2017, we are planning to award a similar amount for deserving grants. The grant application process opens online on February 15 and closes on April 17. Next year's walk run will be held on Saturday, May 13, at North High School on the newly designed Les Hilli course. And as part of our Federation Foundation Board Member and Principal Partnerships, board members are in the process of contacting principals of schools they are assigned to to set up appointments, to talk with the principals and staff about the Celebration of Excellence, grant process, and run walk. Mr. President, that completes my report.
I think it was Dr. Gray who figured out how to knock down some of those hills and reroute.
We just rerouted it, yeah.
That's what it was.
That was a little too much, the last, the old lower route was a little too much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Always an excellent organization, a lot happening at the Waukesha Education Foundation. Just go out to waukeshaeducationfoundation.org to find out more and to donate and to get involved. We, it's an exciting, exciting organization there.
If I may add, Mr. Como, the people that serve on that board are all people, business people from the community, and they're so dedicated to helping our school district advance.
They do a great job.
They do.
Yes, thank you for your report. Moving on to our safety committee report given by Amanda Roddy.
Thank you, Ms. President. The safety committee met this morning at the service building. The first topic discussed was the student and workers' comp accident reports. Those were reviewed. Next, they reported that there were no incidents at the schools that hosted polling sites this year. A brief discussion was held regarding future elections and considering making election days non-student days. And lastly, there were, there are no major health issues to report throughout the schools. And the next meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 14, 9:00 AM at the service building.
Okay, thank you for that. You know, it's, Mrs. Reincheck?
Thank you. How could you make election days non-student days?
Scheduling the PD days?
We would schedule it.
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. So when the calendars come up and prior to the board approving them, consider having, where the students would have a Thursday, Friday off, have the weekend and then come back the following week for our election. Then instead of having Thursday, Friday, they would have Monday, Tuesday off. So try to work to have the students not in the classrooms. However, this year, the plan that they did have in place, I guess the best way to put it, they had a soft lockdown where the students, for instance Hawthorne had pajama day. So the kids had, half the room was watching movies and, and doing activities during what would be their lunch or their recess and things like that. So the students stayed out of the halls as much as possible. So different schools, especially in elementary levels, did activities such as that.
Thank you.
Before we do that, though, I want to make sure that we, we, you know, take a good look at the process. Typically, you know, you could potentially have four or more elections in a single year. And, and the other problem is, you know, we set this calendar a year and a half in advance, so it's sometimes hard to determine some of these things. But I also don't want to give the community the message that, that we're doing this because we think, you know, voting is dangerous or voting is inconvenient. I, as, and I know I've said to a number of you, I think it's probably one of the most important things we do as, as citizens in the United States. And I think it's important for our students to see our, our parents and adults and our, and our senior citizens coming to vote. So, you know, typically, our spring elections are pretty light. So there may be some times where it makes sense to have those days. But again, those last two days in, in October, which used to be the, formerly the Teachers Convention Day. My parent advisory group really covets those days. So I want to make sure too that we're meeting their needs as well. Because they like to have that Thursday, Friday off as opposed to a Monday, Tuesday. So, you know, I, I think we've had some contentious elections and I think it's been, it's, it's gone okay. We, we've had, and I think I reported to the board, we've, we had two security people at each of the buildings where we had the elections. And the report is they were very bored and I, that's okay with me. But in any event, I think we can do some things. There might be some more things we can do to make sure that it is a safe situation because I know parents do get concerned when, when visitors come in and out of a school potentially unchecked, when, when students. So, so I'm hoping there's some kind of compromise that we can do to, you know, with the safety committee to make all that work.
Yes, thank you. And that, basically what you said is the conversation that was held. They understand that it is important for the students to see the, the elections go on and the polling take place. And there were, like I said, there was no major safety concerns. There was no major incidents that they needed to report. And these are just kind of some ideas that were thrown around.
No, I understand.
And they understand that there's a lot of planning behind it in order to have something like that be taken off of a regular school day. But anyhow, what you said is pretty much exactly what the conversation was.
And quite honestly, there's a number of spring elections that happen during spring break. So I mean, that one is kind of taking care of itself. But so it would just be primarily the fall elections, I think, that we'd have to take a look at, so.
Mrs. Brusink?
You know, a question has come up, why do we have to use public schools? And I said, well, because we have, we use public places for public events like that.
Well, a lot of them, you know, they have adequate parking.
Right.
Almost every, literally everyone has to have handicap parking. They typically don't have stairs that you have to get up, up and down for some people.
In some schools.
It's, it's usually pretty easy in and out, easy out. And for many of our schools, they're the only appropriate public access in the area.
This is cool.
Now, we can still work with the city, there might be some different options in some of our areas. And again, that's to address, you know, we, we do want to take the parents' concerns seriously on those, on those issues, so. But if there's some things that we can do to, to continue to enhance that, that whole program, we'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. Moving on to our charter school and program report, Mr. Baumgart?
Yes, I do have a couple of items to report this evening from a couple of programs. First one, combining both the Health Academy and the Engineering Academy. December 7, they are going to be holding an open house for the purpose of incoming eighth graders have a chance to come to South High School and learn about the academies and meet the teachers. And, you know, we are in the process of applications and admissions, so those, those things all go together. Also, with regard to the Health and Engineering Academy, there's an organization called the Wisconsin Advanced Placement Advisory Council. And they have what they call Pace Setter Awards, recognizing schools who are, excuse me, for promoting both access to and excellence in the advanced placement courses. And both of our academies came in with a Level 2. You know, there's a Level 1 that's a little bit higher. But their Level 2 means that 20% or more of the graduating seniors took at least one advanced placement exam and 65% or more earned scores of three or above, which are considered the good scores for transcripting credits. So our two academies continue to perform well. We'll be hearing more shortly when we get the embargo off of the report card, but we can't talk about that yet. Also, relative to the Engineering Academy, there was a very nice article in the Freeman last week highlighting the Engineering Academy and some of the work they do and with the organizations and businesses they do it with. If you haven't seen it, I'll see to it that there will be a copy in your Friday packet. Our Summit View Magnet School is going to be hosting the first, that's not part of the title, the original Integrated Arts Showcase Event on Tuesday, November 15, during the school day to show to the community some of the things that the students are working on. And certainly, you're all welcome to attend that. Also, they have now an artist in residence named Kathy Walter, who's starting her residency working with the kids at the school. Something else that Jeff has put into place. The STEM Academy is advising us that they want us to come and see the upcoming, this coming, upcoming, I'll get this straight, yeah. Come and join them on this Friday morning to see the amazing display and sharing of student showcases of the fantastic STEAM. to see the amazing display and sharing of student showcases of the fantastic STEAM, remember the A in there is for arts, projects. Jim says imaginations are welcome.
Is that STEM Randall or STEM Saratoga?
Jim and Eric Hill from our STEM Academy over there have been selected to present at the institute's, the Institute at CISA I, that's the name of it, annual convening, and they're going to be putting on some stuff about the excellent work we do, how we use the space, and some of the things that the kids are coming up with. So that might be just, again, she, we are showing off in a positive way.
And we should.
And lastly, E-Achieve sent me some information, some of which I'm not going to share because it's part of the embargo, and you'll hear about it next.
Have to wait.
You'll hear about it next month. But he had something else in there that is worth hearing. He has recently conducted a survey about a week ago, following, with following percentages being reported, based on a agree or strong agree basis. Asking students whether they like being a student at E-Achieve, 88% positive. Whether they think their teachers are good, I like most of my teachers at this school, 92% positive. Asking about teachers' care, most of my teachers care about what I'm, about what and how I'm doing, 91.5%. So very positive responses. As Rick Wood, he does say there's some things that could be using some work, and he will continue working on those things. This will be a little bit more detail on this in your Friday packet, along with that article from the Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Is there any, anything else?
Concludes your report.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our Consent Agenda. Mr. Clark, did we have any public gifts to report?
Yeah, there's two gifts tonight. A total of $626.41 was donated to Whittier Elementary School by Kathy Boyagen via GoFundMe. This gift will be used to help pay for Discovery World Field Trip taken by students in Mrs. Boyagen's and Mrs. Mathis' second and third grade classes, so the students don't have to pay as much.
Isn't that nice?
The second one, school supplies valued at $500 were donated to South High School by Myers, a grocery store to be used for students that don't have access to the supplies they need.
Always thank you to those people for their gifts. They're always generous. Appreciate it. Your Consent Agenda includes a variety of categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity to do so in a moment. Included in the items for approval are decisions of expulsion panel, which had met on October 17th, 2016. Confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under Item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we have scheduled an executive session at the close of our regular meeting. Approval of the Consent Agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel's action. Does anyone wish to have anything set aside for separate consideration at this time? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Madden will present the Consent Agenda for Approval.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved a one retirement, one leave of absence, and one new contract. The information was provided in your packet. Mr. President, that concludes, I move that the Consent Agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Any discussion? Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero, Sue? And thank you for the Consent Agenda report, Ms. Madden.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Moving on to the Superintendent's Report given by Dr. Gray.
Thank you. Last week, I, I attended Randall STEM Level One classes, and I was grilled primarily on many items, but the, the one topic was, how come you never call off school for, for weather? And so with that in mind, I, I have my annual weather memo. This goes out to principals, parents, and so on. And again, we'll, we'll continue using wind chill warning, which is minus 35, as an indicator of, of closing school. And typically, a winter storm warning, if that storm warning, depending on when that, that might show up in the, in the city. So obviously, the, the closings have to be made prior to 5:00 a.m., and often, our weather changes from the forecast between 5:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. quite often. So it's, sometimes you make the best guess, sometimes we guess correctly, sometimes we don't. Again, we, we offer parents, if it really is bad weather, they have the option of keeping their kids home or picking them up early if, if, if the case might be. But a lot goes into the, the decision to close the school. We involve many people, including all the superintendents from, from Waukesha County. We'll discuss, and typically, we, we all pretty much stay on the same page unless there's some, some strange things happening out there. And again, you know, you can never count on things. Four years ago, we had a massive storm headed our way at 4:00 a.m. Everyone called off school, and it proceeded to stop in Oconomowoc. And so, Oconomowoc, a little snow, the rest of us got rain till about 6:00 p.m. And, but you just, you know, sometimes you can't predict those. You look on the radar, and it looks just, just horrible. And again, all you can do is make the best, best decision you can. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know, but that'll be going out to principals and parents soon. Report cards, the final drafts will come to us tomorrow, November 10th. The reason, we, we did, we did see the original drafts of those, but we were able to question DPI. We had some corrections that we hopefully they will agree with and will make on those particular report cards. And then they go public on November 17th. So they're, they're embargoed until that date. Now, that date has changed three times in the last three weeks. So as of today, the date is November 17th. I cannot guarantee it will be November 17th on tomorrow. But assuming it is, what we'll do is, is we'll, we'll have some reports that go out. Terry Schuster is working on some reports, and we'll get those to you the night of the 16th, okay? Now technically, you can't read those until 12:01 a.m. on this, but if you do, just don't tell me. Call us when we're up, please. Overall, I think we have some really, really good news coming. We have some, I, I think some, some fantastic turnarounds, and, and I'm, I'm very, you know, proud of the overall improvement that we've made on our school report cards. We have some challenges, though. We have a few challenges out there that, that we really need to work on. You know, part of it is, I think, learning, understanding what we need to do, because it's a whole new testing system, especially with the ACT and so on. And so we, we have some learning ourselves to do. But, but for the first time with the new forward exam and with the ATC exam, given our, our student body and where we, where we have been, I think we're in a good place. Earlier tonight, you heard the, about the West Girls Cross Country Team finishing fourth at state. However, we had, all three high schools had a, a significant number of runners at the state cross-country meet for both boys and girls, and, and that's, that's great to hear. I mean, a lot of times you hear about the, the big sports, football, which we did have a good, we had a, across all three high schools, we had a pretty good football season. But it's great to see all cross-country teams making it to state and, and doing well at state. And finally, this Friday is Veterans Day, and we have some information, I, I think this made you, Terry, was this, did this go to the board yet? On, on some of the things that we're, we're doing at our different schools, we, for example, Bethesda, we have first graders writing letters of appreciation to our veterans. There will be an all-school assembly there. Lowell, again, second grade, has a parent of a second grader coming in to talk about Veterans Day, retired Marine. Summit View has an all-school assembly, Rose Glen, and there are others, too. These are just the ones that, that I recall off the top of my head. So number of different things in our schools to honor our veterans on Veterans Day, and that's my report.
I had, I ran into a veteran this morning of, of the Vietnam War and had a great conversation. I could tell how proud he, he was serving our country to have the privilege to vote and to have the privileges that we have here, the rights and the freedoms. And we should take time to thank each of those people that we know who've served our country in that manner this Friday. Thank, thank you for sharing that. Todd, anything else?
That's it.
Question?
Yes, Mrs. Brusink.
Todd, do we ask, you know, I know it's one of the holidays that we, we are expected to uphold based on recommendation from the state.
Yeah.
Does every school do something?
There, there's either announcements made or programs, and, and a lot of, there's also a lot of classroom things, but that, those are just too many to list here.
Right.
But there's, there's quite a few things going on.
That go on in all schools. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gray. Moving on to our committee reports, that's where we do most of the heavy lifting on the decisions that we have to make. Our first committee is Teaching and Learning, and that's given by Mrs. Brusink.
Thank you, Mr. Como. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on Tuesday, November 1st, 2016, at 6:00. We have one action item, four information items, and one discussion items that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The first action item relates to approval of organic chemistry course change. Organic chemistry has traditionally been offered as a semester-based college preparatory course. The course was a survey of organic chemistry but lacked application as well as biochemistry instruction. Based on student feedback and the desire to prepare students for a rigorous college science program, organic chemistry should be changed from one to two semesters. On a vote of 5-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved changing the high school organic chemistry course from one semester to a year-long course. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mrs. Reincheck. Mrs. Reincheck.
A quick comment. I just went on my first college tour with my daughter, and they were talking about the, the schools not having organic chemistry.
Really?
Mm-hmm. She wants to be a dietitian, so we were in Stevens Point, and they said you will have, I think it was a year of organic chemistry. And so they were just talking about how most kids aren't exposed to that, and I was like, I knew that, so.
Good. Thank you.
And it's a very difficult topic. I can see why it needs to be two semesters and not one to, to just allow the student to get their hands around that tough topic. And we need, we need good organic chemists. It's important, very important.
And amazing, we have teachers that can do it. That's what's wonderful part of it.
Yes, yes. Do we have any spectrometers at all? Are we going to plan on getting spectrometers and, for analysis?
Spectrometer.
Spectometers?
Yeah.
No?
I don't.
They're pretty expensive, I think.
Thermometers. Thermometers.
That's a finance and facility question.
I guess so. I guess so.
Fun committee.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, we'll be taking the vote. Sue, will you take the roll call?
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reincheck.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes eight zero. Barb?
Okay, moving forward, we have an information item related to computer science course proposals. At last week's meeting, the Teaching and Learning Committee heard from Dan Kizer and Amy Lang, Dan Pachinsky, and Brian Yearling, who were there to communicate with the committee members about a forthcoming proposal for different career paths in the computer science field. Currently, we have siloed opportunities at the elementary level for coding and computer science, but not much in the terms of formal classes for students who want to pursue this field. We'll be bringing this item for action at the December Teaching and Learning Meeting and full board meeting.
Something came up since then, I think is worth sharing at this time. At the Engineering Governance Board meeting last night, the, one of the concerns that they have is, is the amount of computer science, the lack of computer science opportunities for the engineering students. And Amy was there as well, so we shared with them this conversation that we had last week, Barbara. And they're very pleased to hear that we, we are probably moving in that direction, so.
What committee was that, Mr. Baumgart?
The Governance Board for the Engineering Academy.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, we, we've noticed that we've got to make some additions there, and we're going to. And we had three students at our, at our CNI, or Teaching and Learning Meeting, and they couldn't go any farther than sophomore year because there wasn't anything left for them. So we've got to do something to provide that, and we are. Second, we have the Physical Education Course Proposal. Dan Kizer and Wendy Schwengel-Goss, along with three high school physical education teachers, were at the Teaching and Learning Meeting last week to prevent a proposal to realign the high school physical education course sequence to allow students more individualized choice in how they engage in the coursework. Students are required to take 1.5 credits of physical education across three years of high school, and this will not change. The proposed shift in the physical education model looks to personalize the experience for students based upon individual interest, and we'll be bringing this item also for action at the December Teaching and Learning Meeting and full board meeting. Then we have a Cultural Proficiency Awareness Project. The Teaching and Learning Committee also heard from Dee Garcia, Jason Gehan, Maria Garcia-Velas, and Mark Schneider this week in an effort to raise awareness of cultural proficiency to our leaders and our staff. And this will ultimately help our future leaders, our students, shift from viewing differences as problematic to learning how to interact effectively within a diverse society. Next, we have update on new roles and responsibility for the elementary student services. Sharon Thede and Patty Havel provided information to update the Teaching and Learning Committee on the implementation of the redesign for service delivery with social workers and school psychologists in student services. Then we have one discussion item related to student achievement update from Blair Elementary School. Melissa Yao and Ada Cruz-Ferrin and the Blaze Sale Team members were present at last week's Teaching and Learning Committee meeting to highlight Blair's recognitions, update the committee members on student growth, and present Blair's Theory of Action and Sale processes. This was an exciting update, and there is much to celebrate at Blair. Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Moving on to our next committee report, that is the Human Resource Committee given by Ms. Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have an action item tonight, which is the 2017-18 school calendar approval. This is the second review of the school calendar, which was included in your packet. School employees, staff, parents, and board members have reviewed and given feedback on the calendar. The calendar follows a similar pattern from previous years. We have vetted beginning school on September 1st. The feedback received was mixed with arguments for and against scheduling the first day of school on September 1st versus Tuesday, September 5th. Recall that the State of Wisconsin prohibits starting school earlier than September 1st. In the past, when September 1st fell on a Friday, as it did in 2000, 2001, 2006, 2007, we did start school on that Friday, September 1st. Based on feedback, we are presenting a calendar with a September 1st, 2017, school start date. Mr. President, I move to approve the 2017-18 school calendar as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion? Mr. Dietz.
Personally, I don't support the September 1st start date for several reasons. I don't think it's student or parent-friendly or staff-friendly. I see the opportunity for a lot of student absenteeism, and I'm concerned about that. And also the fact that teacher professional development days are starting on, based on this calendar, they'd be starting on August 22nd. And the final reason that I would be against that is, this is the fourth draft that I've seen, and I'm a little bit confused about, you know, draft to draft, and I think that might also bring some confusion amongst the people that have probably looked at this calendar over the time, and maybe for them, it might have been difficult to determine one way or the other which way they should be siding as far as a September 1st or September
Did we, as part of our discussion, and perhaps I'll point this or ask this of Ms. Hedstrom, do we look at those previous years attendance records? Hedstrom, do we look at those previous years' attendance records where we started on that Friday? There were a few years that were mentioned?
We attempted to do that, but our people in technology said that that information wasn't available to us any longer, so I have no way of knowing what the attendance was.
Because we switched systems, that's why. Okay, I got you. I don't know if we rolled that information, that data forward when we did conversions.
Doesn't always.
Mr. Baumgart?
I guess, I previously shared some of Greg's concerns on this, and I think I heard the last time we talked about this, the possibility of making that day more of a logistics day than an academic day. And I know that logistics at the beginning of the school year are a big part of it.
They are.
So I'm still kind of uneasy about this because of attendance is something that, so I guess what I'm saying is I'll support it this time around, but I think we need to get a good measure as to whether that works for the next time, and who knows when that's going to come up, but.
You know, it wasn't.
There will be another year out there when we're going to be looking.
It wasn't that long ago when we were actually starting school around the 24th, 25th of August, and then the law changed. But, you know, one of the concerns is each day that we get in prior to the AP exams and the ACT exams is a big help. Those are given in early in the spring. We are at a disadvantage compared to, you know, various charter schools and private schools as far as start dates in those particular testing areas. So, you know, the thinking is if that Friday, we can, we can get the logistics out of the way, locker set up, books given out, then hit the ground running on Tuesday, the 5th. That gives us one more day prior to, and I understand Mr. Dietz's concern about the timing of it. You know, I'm sure that Friday is a, is probably isn't the most ideal date in the world, but that's what the law gives us. Now, there is a, football started, and I think that will be the third or fourth game into the season.
Mm-hmm, right.
If we, if we wait till the 5th, I think most of the season will be over for the kids or even in school. But it won't be quite that bad. And, you know, I, again, talking with staff and parents, it's probably a toss-up, but I think each day that we can get in prior to that, you know, prior to those AP and ACT exams may just help us. I don't know how much, but hopefully it will help us.
Mrs. Reinichak?
I just wanted to say, this year, it was a Thursday and a Friday that we started on, and we actually chose to take off and go up north. Was it a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or just, no, it was Thursday, Friday? We were in on Thursday, but then we left on Friday. But it was good to just get in and get the lockers set up and let them know where the teachers were and such like that. But it's, I thought about it as well, but as Todd said, it's, if it's a 50-50 chance that we start then and get the kids, get the kids rolling and then get everything in place, and then on Monday, full steam ahead. I see your point with the football games, I see it all, and I, I don't see a problem starting on Friday.
Ms. Mann?
As I said, when I was reading about this, in the past, when September 1st fell on Friday, as it did in 2000, 2001, and 2006, '07, I believe that's before Act 10, and that was part of the negotiations of the teacher contract. They decided these days, so I think that the teachers are, they like that Friday.
Mr. McCaffrey?
No, that's all right. Your Act is going to be kind of dicey as well, because that, the 1st is going to fall on a Saturday.
We're, you know, and I would hope that this issue's out in front of our state legislature, and hopefully they can find a way to create some flexibility for us. I mean, ideally, it would be great to be starting one of the last couple days of August, so we'd have three, four days in that first week before we hit the, but it just isn't possible, so.
I believe there's a news story on Channel 12 about the charter schools down in Milwaukee that are going to start.
But most of, most of the charters and privates do start at the end of August.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, we're looking to approve draft number four for the 2017-2018 school calendar year. Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
No.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 7-1, Sue? Ms. Mann?
I have one discussion item, which is the Recommended Handbook Change Teacher Strategic Compensation Plan. The 2015-16 school year was our first full year of implementation of the Teacher Strategic Compensation Plan, which the board approved in August of 2015. The Compensation Committee changes to the Compensation Plan are described in the document provided in your packet. The purpose of this item is to provide feedback to the Human Resources Committee and the Board of Education and recommend changes to the staff handbook that reflect the Compensation Committee's recommendation. The Strategic Compensation Committee, consisting of teachers, administrators, and EAW leaders, met on September 20th and the 27th, 2016, to review the current teacher compensation plan. The Compensation Team reviewed the language from the Compensation Plan for clarity and practicality and recommended changes. The Board's Compensation Committee reviewed the changes and made additional revisions. We are recommending the revisions be incorporated into the staff handbook. We will bring this item to the December Board of Education meeting for action. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
And this is a discussion item. If there are any comments or questions on this. We did have a couple of meetings that most of us had participated in, and I think there's some good clarification that was going on, and that was the primary reason, so. All right, thank you, Ms. Mann, for your report. Moving on to the Compensation Committee, also given by Ms. Mann.
I have no report this evening.
That's a quick one. Thank you. Moving on to policy, given by Mr. Baumgart.
Yes, we do have an action item and some discussion items for you this evening. The action item deals with the pathway of approval for the Neola policies. At the October 24th work session we had on this, it was a recommendation made by Kurt, I believe, that we should present the board with a pathway that we're looking at, leading to the final approval of all the policy work that's been done. The Board of Education and the Board Policy Committee have been involved in reviewing and drafting the proposed policies that we've been working on for about four, five months now. Policy manual has been vetted by administration and the Policy Committee members recently and going forward. In addition, the Board of Education and the Policy Committee has been provided regular updates on the process used to develop the draft policies. By approving this pathway of approval, the Board is acknowledging the committee work that went into the development of these policies, and as such, will be prepared to approve the full policy manual in February. At this time, I move for the approval of the pathway of approval for the Neola policies as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brusink. Discussion?
Yes. I'm, this, I guess I will adjust to you, Mr. Baumgart, and to Mr. Cook. Will we be giving copies of all of the policies to the entire board so that when we do hold a discussion, that everybody will, you know, be knowledgeable?
Joe, Mr. Cook?
The Board has copies of the policy manual, as was proposed. It's in four volumes.
Yes.
It goes through the zeros to the 9,000 series. As part of the policy work, I will be connecting with, ongoing connections with the assistant superintendents in the various areas to clarify questions. I'll be bringing those questions and updates to the Policy Committee. So all of the board members will have the first draft of what was done in a printed form. The updates then will go through committee. Anything that goes beyond a language change, anything that would be substantial to the policy, will be, there'll be special attention put on that for the committee and then the whole board at the December, January, and then eventual February board meetings.
So are you saying that every board member will have the four books?
All, all board members have the four books and draft form.
They do right now. Okay, good. I didn't know that.
Everything after this will be done online, so when the book is approved.
Right.
It will be a digital copy that people will be able to access.
Thank you both.
Maybe I'd like to just refresh, particularly for the Policy Committee members that are here, that the first step in this pathway is, as our meeting ends next Tuesday, we will have reviewed the 0000 through 4000 policies. So that's the first and half the second book, I think, so.
I think there's roughly 400 policies, I think, that we have.
Total, there's about 400 plus, yeah.
Yeah, it's a significant undertaking. We've been doing this since the summer.
It is really exciting reading.
Well, the positive thing is, we have never had a total audit of our policy, so we, we will be in alignment with all the federal and state regulations that are out there, and there's quite a number of them that we need to be in alignment with. That's, that is a big undertaking. I like this approach that's been recommended and outlined. I think this is.
It brings it right together.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we do have more work, or I should say, administration has more work to do once this is approved to get ready for next year, which will be important work. Joe, do you want to outline a few of the things that administration has to do?
Yeah, so in addition to making sure that the policy, policies that are finalized in the February meeting are exactly what we want them to say, we have the work of making sure that those policies are then published so that our, our community can access those policies. In addition to that, then, we begin the work of creating the administrative guidelines for all of those policies. So in order to have a February approval date that would give us March through June to create the administrative guidelines in and around the policies, to speak specific to this pathway, we are going to be going through a committee review process and updating the board as we go forward. So there is going to be work. Once the book is approved, we'll be getting recommended updates from Neola in the summer months, so it will be ongoing policy work by committee and the board.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, we're going to take a vote on the pathway of approval for the Neola policies. Sue, will you take the roll call vote?
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes 8-0, Sue? Mr. Baumgart?
Okay, I have some discussion items on four policies or policy guidelines. All of these will be coming forward at the next meeting for actual approval. The first one is Policy Number 6171, Operation of the Special Education Programs. Quite simply, this is just a correction of the title for the, from Executive Director to Deputy Superintendent, the position that Joe sits currently in, and there's cited twice in that policy. Any questions on that?
Mrs. Brusink?
Baumgart, that will be Mr. Cook's new title.
Correct.
Thank you.
Policy 5113.1, Open Enrollment, is also a correction of, I just got to find a little space in here, of a title. Previously read District Administrator. In our district, we use the position, we identify the position as superintendent, that is Mr. Gray's position, and that is the only change in 5113.1. Questions on that? Policy Number 5127, Graduation. This is Graduation Requirements. This one is a little bit more elaborate, but if you have it in front of you, it's on page two. It deals with the position we took a couple years back when we said that our students should have been exposed to an online course someplace in their high school time. And at that time, we were quite specific and said that they must have taken an online, a course online through the E-Achieve Academy, or E-Achieve Academy Virtual School. We feel now that is a little bit over-specific and over-restrictive on our students. There are so many places that they can be exposed to an online course, which are every bit as good as our E-Achieve Academy, and sometimes getting into an E-Achieve Academy may be really either not significant enough or maybe restrictive again. So what we are saying is that they will now be able to take an online virtual or blended educational format such as E-Achieve, Blackboard 9, Plato, or any of other experiences that would be approved by the principal and the Teaching and Learning Department. For instance, if they want to take something through a college, that might even actually be something that they could now do and would not be restricted to strictly doing it at E-Achieve.
But they'd have to pay for it.
No, if they took it under the options, of course. You know, and I think when we, when we wrote this policy, there was never an intent to limit it just to E-Achieve, but I think, you know, that never was stated, so I think this is a good, good add to that.
So that also will be coming up next, at the next meeting in December. And the last one is, really, yes.
Mrs. Reinichak?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Aren't our students supposed to take a physics, or not physics, a civics class? Aren't they supposed to pass a civics test before they graduate? Is that state mandated, not our mandated, or?
That's state mandated.
So it's not going to be on here? Not required for graduation through us, it's from the state?
It might be, but I mean, it's, it, state law requires, a lot of times, we, to prevent redundancy, we're not putting in both. But with the new policy, once we get a little bit more guidance on that, I think, you know, it probably will go in there. But I think there's still some questions out there from the state on how they'll be administered, when, and so on, but.
So it's not, as of now, we have not had that test?
We have not.
This is your, right?
Yeah.
It's this year.
The spring, yeah. But again, we don't have a lot of info from it from DPI yet.
Because we got a copy of it.
Okay, I'm, I think, you know, again, I have not seen a lot of definitive procedural information with it, so.
Okay.
I think that copy we saw was embedded in one of our other social studies classes. I'm not sure which one. But I do remember you're correct, Karen, that we did, we did have a copy presented at one of our CNI in those days' meetings, before it was TLC meetings.
We like new names.
Anyway, you've got to live with that for a while, Jody, I'm sorry. Anyway, we did see a test like that, and I, my recollection is it was embedded in one of our other courses.
Civics class.
One of our courses.
Right. It's just the citizenship.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yeah.
Just a quick question about the online. Are we anticipating having the kids take college credit outside of the academic options?
Oh.
Because that could be pricey.
Well, unless it's transcripted credit through WCTC or something that's been set up already.
I mean, there's, there, we can, we can deny some of those if we're already offering those courses, similar courses, but depending on, on the situation and where they're coming from, we would have some control over that. But it might be an option in some cases if, if we are going to require the online, the online class to graduate.
This does require principal and department approval before they can opt into one of these other.
Right. For each class? Or for?
Well, to take, to take something outside of the E-Achieve program.
Okay. So we're, so like, just a question on how that's going to work. So each student is going to submit what they want to take, and then that will be approved?
If it's one of these that was listed in here, which I'm not.
Well, they, when they, when they set up their class schedule for the year.
That's part of their class schedule, yeah.
It would be determined, you know, you're going to take the credits either through E-Achieve or some other form that, that's, you know, okayed by the administration.
And is there going to be like a list of classes that are going to be presented? You could take it, you could take history, you could take a political science class, you could take a mathematics class. I mean, it sounds like there's a huge amount of classes that they could take.
Right, but I, but I mean, E-Achieve, you know, has a lot of those, and that would be the first option, but if they, if they're saying, well, I want to take an online course from Harvard in basic biology, that's going to be a no, because we already offer that both through E-Achieve and through brick and mortar schools. But if there's some specialty, I mean, there are situations where, where we might have to approve a particular youth options if we're not offering it, and it, and it would also qualify for one of our graduation credits.
So, Joe Cook? So Joe Cook has some.
Dr. Gray just touched on it, the youth options and the course options, access that kids have, that is an option that if a student hasn't taken an E-Achieve class or participated in a blended ed course within the district, if there was a component of that class that was offered through the university, which the student can access through course or youth options, then that would satisfy this requirement, this online virtual requirement.
Okay. And then, the only other question I have is related to grade point averages and whatnot? If we're taking classes through this at the college?
Well, that, that. That is one of the policies that, that I think needs some work. We ran into some problems with that last year on, on the weighting of those, and, and I'm not going to discuss what the rules may or may not be. I think that's something that would, should go to policy and, and have that discussion there. But we need to, we need to solidify that so that it's, it's consistent across all high schools.
I just want to make sure we're thinking about that, especially.
Oh, we're, we're definitely thinking about that.
Especially with this online.
Yeah, we, we've had some problems with that.
Joe's already thinking about it.
The proposed Neola policy will address that specific question.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, then, the one that, actually, it's two that are left, or they're, they're both together, is Policy Fifty-one forty-one-two-G and sixty-one forty-five-seven-G. These are guidelines, but we're going to hold those off for another month, just for convenience sake. This has to deal with the identification and recording of medication provided on field trips. Somebody has to be there. I think we talked about that one. Oh, that was at the committee meeting, I'm sorry. But you'll see it in here, "For all field trips, the coordinating teacher, advisor, administrator will notify the health room clerical staff of the trip, no fewer than seven calendar days prior to the trip, to ensure the proper preparation of plans, medication, and trained staff for, for that field trip." So that will be, that is going to be added when we approve this, and it's in, it's in both of these guidelines, so. And that will.
Ms. Roddy?
Yes, I apologize for interrupting you. I had a follow-up question. Please correct me if I'm, I'm not sure if this is the correct platform for this. During our policy meeting, we had discussed the Administration of Medication to Students, and I had brought up the question about being a parent there at the field trip. And in my particular case, my children do require allergy medication. And I had asked if the, if I was there, did there need to be a staff member, did that staff member need to be the one to administer my children's medication, or because I was there, I could do it? After the meeting, a citizen had seen that and asked, if I, if I'm there as a parent, why does there need to be a staff member there also to be able to administer that? Does that make sense? Thank you.
That comes with the guidance from the state, that we're obligated to make sure that a trained staff member is on the field trip to address the needs of an individual student regardless if the parent is there or a multitude of students, if, if only one family member is there. So we're obligated to do that.
But I believe it was determined that the parent can administer.
Right. Correct.
Medication.
But let's say on this particular field trip, I, my child was the only child that needed it, I was there, I am capable of administering it. The question is, why would there need to be a staff member there? But because it's coming from the state, that's why we're having to follow it.
That's correct.
Thank you. Answer my question.
Good question. That would conclude the Policy Committee's report.
Okay.
Oh, a meeting reminder, next week, Tuesday, for committee members. Anybody else that is interested in?
Come on down. All right. Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our Technology Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee of the Walk Show Board of Education met on Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen. There were no action or informational items on the agenda, but we did have two discussion items. We received an update on ongoing projects. The Walk Show One Initiative was the first update we received. The Wave One replacements are ready for dispersment. Actually, they've probably already been dispersed because the meeting happened last month. New protective cases are also being fitted to the replacement iPads, which have a warranty which will supplement our self-insurance. The district will also be switching to a local app store, which will allow us greater control over app usage and security. Essentially, what we're going to do is, we are going to create our own app store and fill it with apps that we approve, and the students will only be able to download those apps to the iPads, which we're hoping will alleviate some of the issues that we've been having with students downloading inappropriate apps, and apps that are not approved by the district. We received an update on our data environment. Discipline reporting has been integrated into the Infinite Campus SIS, as has the new state reporting system, Wise Data. The Infinite Campus is allowing us instantaneous updates to the state data network. Work is continuing on both the Wise Dash Local Consortium and our internal data lake to supplement the local consortium. We also received an update on website upgrades. The new district website is nearing completion. The new site will be hosted on the School Wires platform, which will give us an upgrade to a responsive layout. The responsive layout will allow better viewing on mobile devices such as iPads and phones. Individual school websites are also being addressed currently. Those are going to take a little bit longer because there's so many schools, and we're going to try to put it on the same platform so there's continuity across the district. The door access upgrades are almost complete. The last remaining buildings to be upgraded are West High School and the Service Building. We also received an update on the new video surveillance system that we have installed, and received a demo on it. It's fantastic. It, it is very more sophisticated than the last system that we had. You can actually even view it on an iPad at home. Security personnel and the police also have access to it. We received an update on completed projects as well. We have installed two new wireless controllers in the district, which will be replacing six aging controllers. The two new controllers will allow us to have ten times the number of wireless clients within the district. The core router was also updated, which will increase the number of devices that are addressable, and also address space constraints and greatly reduce power consumption by the routers. The HVA systems in several server rooms have also been updated to increase efficiency and reliability. Basically, the server rooms were cooled by condensing units, which were expensive to maintain because they would run in the winter, and to run an air conditioner in the winter is very expensive. You need specialized equipment to get it to run and, and get it not to freeze up. So the equipment that was installed will actually in the winter pull outside air in that's below a certain temperature and cool the, the rooms with that air, not using the, the other equipment. And that concludes my report. If there are, yes.
Ms. Reinichuk?
Thank you. When will the iPad Store access available?
The iPad.
Or the, sorry, the App Store. When you are going to have just the School District of Waukesha maintain those apps, when will that be implemented?
We're hoping to implement it in the spring of this year.
Okay. Thank you.
They're starting the process now, though, right?
Yeah, they're working on it right now.
Yeah, so they're taking requests for apps.
There's app approval going on right now. Yes, that's exactly right. They have to approve, all the apps have to approve that are in the store, and that's the process they're going through right now. They're populating the store, basically.
Are our own apps?
No, they're apps that teachers request. So for instance, what will happen is, a teacher will have to send a request to the Technology Department, and that, that app will then be evaluated by the Technology Department to determine whether it has educational value and has, you know, certain security parameters around it related to student data and whatnot, so they're not taking any information, whoever created the app. And then it will be put into the store. So it's a, it's a fairly long process because there's a lot of different laws that are currently being put on the books related to student privacy, data privacy. But it's currently being worked on right now.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. Moving on to Finance and Facilities. Tonight, that will be given by Ms. Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two action items. The first one is the district line of credit. The committee was presented with a resolution authorizing a taxable revolving line of credit for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed five million dollars. The committee approved the resolution authorizing the district to establish a line of credit with Waukesha State Bank for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed five million dollars, and I so move.
Is there a second? Saying by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion? Oh, saying by Mr. McCaffrey, sorry.
Only question, I have a question.
Yes.
The only que, that is, is this the thing we do every year when we have to void and when we get the money versus?
Yeah. And sometimes we have not had to use it in the last couple of years.
Line of credit, so.
Yeah, I believe in your packet, you do have on the last page cash flow analysis for the year. Mr. Clark, you might want to comment on it, but we don't have a need really to draw on it right now, or we don't anticipate it.
No, it's strictly in place for emergency purposes. We don't foresee the need, there's no cost if you don't access it. It's just a safeguard.
Any other discussion on this? Okay, so will you take the roll call vote on approving the district line of credit?
Tricia Madden.
Aye.
Robert Brzink.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinichuk.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Komo.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
Thank you. Our second action item is School Resource Officer Agreement. The district has had SROs in the high schools since two thousand one, two thousand two school year. In the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, the district paid ninety thousand dollars toward the cost of the three original positions. The committee was presented a five-year contract with the City of Waukesha Police Department. The new agreement not only maintains the current three high school positions, it adds dedicated service to the middle schools, one share SRO, and provides a defined service structure to our elementary sites. The proposed contract would cost one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and two thousand, two hundred and fifteen thousand in the final four years of the agreement, with one hundred dollars being funded via the Community Service Fund. The committee approved the School Resource Officer Contract with the City of Waukesha Police Department for a period of five years as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Saying by Mr. McCaffrey? Got that name right? I've learned. Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Brzink?
Ms. Madden, this fourth SRO officer, their main responsibility will be the middle schools, correct? And how will they be going to middle schools? You know, one day here, one day there? They're going to, okay. So maybe one week, one school will have the two days and, and other weeks.
Hasn't been established since we.
Will this person also be the elementary person?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
These, these officers literally become part of the staff, and I think, you know, obviously, there's, there's a protection purposes, but I think it, it's an opportunity for, for students to talk with these folks.
Certainly.
You know, they're part of the community, they, they, they do a lot with the community as well as the school, and it's, it's just a good situation for us in terms of, of security and having, and, and just letting our students see that the police are real people, too.
So will these officers, as far as the elementary schools go, go only as needed, but they will go to middle schools?
Primarily. There'll be a rotation. I think the, the primary rotation will be with the middle schools, but they do, they will go to our, our elementary.
As needed.
As needed.
Actually, clarification, I thought at the elementary level, there were going to be patrol officers assigned to each school, may, maybe still interacting with that fourth person.
Right.
The business or the contract part is tied to the four officers, but really what this agreement's adding is a, a patrol officer will be assigned to every elementary school. That doesn't mean they're there every day, but a principal has a specific contact with the Police Department, and also that officer will spend time in the elementary schools and be doing community outreach and, and building relationships at a younger, at a younger age.
I think they're all working together. And our SO, our SROs will go to, you know, currently a middle school or elementary nearby as needed, because number one, they're accessible and, and they're, they're, they're available for those. So, yeah, we don't want to, obviously, pigeonhole an officer into a particular school, but they, I, I think we have a pretty good plan in place.
Further discussion on the SRO contract? So this is a five-year contract that we're looking to, to mutually agree upon with the Police Department for our school officer, school resource officers. Sue, will you take the roll call vote on that?
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Karen Reinichuk.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Robert Brzink.
Aye.
Joseph Komo.
Aye. Passes, passes eight zero. Just a quick comment, Ms. Madden. These, these people, our SROs, are fantastic. They've helped us out for many years, very much a part of the culture that, of each school, and the relationships that they build with the students is phenomenal and with the Administration. So they're a very key part of, 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 of our schools, so I'm looking forward to expanding, expanding that throughout our district.
And we have three information items. The first one is the two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget review. On October fifteenth, the Department of Public Instruction finalized several key data points that are used to measure the financial resources available to the School District of Waukesha. The timeline from receiving this data to the board approving the final budget and levy was limited, so Administration reviewed some key points in greater detail. The second information item is the budget development calendar. The committee reviewed the timeline for the development and approval of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen budget. And you have a copy of that in your packet. Monthly budget report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of October. Two hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars was reported in the general fund revenue, and nine million thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars was expended during the month. Nine hundred and seventy-two dollars was reported in the Special Education Fund revenue, and two million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-two was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projections in other areas. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Appreciate that. Before we conclude our regular Board meeting, we do have one more, one more item under Other Business. Are there any recommendations for future action items or discussion items, either at the committee level or the full Board member to, or full Board meeting for future meetings? Ms. Reinichuk?
I was just wondering if we are going to get a report about the South Career and College Fair, how that went, or would that be in Teaching and Learning?
Yeah, we could do that. You can, we can either do it as a Board update, or, I mean, I was present, so I could discuss that, or maybe have some of the folks from South come and talk about it as well.
Was that our, that was our first, right?
There was one the year before, it was much, much smaller, it was held during the day, but nothing to this magnitude.